Educating, Informing, Serving. Fact TV, Keeping Government Honest.
I'd like to call and order the meeting of the Brookline Select Board for September 2, 2020. The time is 6:32. First up is to review changes to the agenda, if there are any. I do not have any changes other than to say Archie Clark may not be attending. Any changes to the agenda for you, Gwen?
No.
Any changes for you, Bruce?
No.
Okay. Then we'll move on to scheduled members of the public. We have Margo Gia from the Wyndham Regional Commission who's here to talk along with Ron Bell, who's not here yet but should be joining us shortly, about the Salt and Sand Shed project. As far as members are concerned, board members, myself, David Jones, Gwen Tanza, and Bruce Mello are all here physically in the office, along with Guy Tanza and Mark Bills. Online, we have, in addition to Margo, we have Peter Barris, our recording clerk, and the folks from Fact TV, and we now have Shelby also who's here online, as far as scheduled members. And unscheduled members of the public, we do have one unscheduled member of the public online, who is Bex Merk. Am I correct in that? Bex, I'm gonna let you...
Yes, that's correct.
Hi. And you had, you wanted to speak briefly about West River Valley Thrives, I think?
Yes, that's correct.
All right. Go right ahead.
Okay. So, West River Valley Thrives is, sorry, I'll turn it off. An organization, very small organization. We're based, our office is actually in Leland and Gray, but we serve the Greater Supervisory District. So, Brookline is one of our towns that we serve youth mostly, and their families, and we're, we try to encourage, like, healthy lifestyle choices, but we have, like, a specific focus around substance use and misuse reduction, specifically in youth. So, we have all kinds of resources. We also try, in normal times, to have events and work with schools and other youth groups that are existing, and connect parents, that kind of thing. But right now, we're figuring all of that out a little bit, because obviously, we actually can't even be at Leland and Gray right now either, so. But yeah, so I just wanted to introduce myself. Bex, I'm pretty new, and the executive director is Med Gonzalez, and she started at the end of last year, so she's also fairly new. So, I'm happy to, like, share a website or any other information if anyone's interested, but we're just trying to get our name out there so that people know they can utilize us.
Sure. Yeah, that would be great. I mean, I guess I'd suggest if you can, you know, my contact information is on the town website. If you wanted to send information about pointing us to your website and any additional details, it would be good for us to have and know that it's an option for people if people approach us.
Yeah, for sure.
And just to have a little bit more of an understanding of what you guys do.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, thanks.
Cool. Gwen, any questions for Bex while we've got her?
No.
Bruce, any questions? Shelby, any questions from you at the moment?
Uh, no.
Cool. All right. Well, thanks for joining us, Bex. And yeah, if you want to forward me that information, then we'll have it and certainly look. Peter, sorry, I think Peter has a question.
Just wondering if you could spell the name of the organization?
Salt River Thrives, right?
I just put it in the chat box for you.
Oh, thanks. Oh, okay. I thought it was French fries.
Wishful thinking. Unfortunate for you.
I think that's a good idea, Brian.
Cool. Thanks very much, Bex. Moving on to approval of the minutes. First up is approving the minutes from the August 19 regular meeting. I'll just run through a couple of things that I noticed. Again, Shelby is left out of Peter's minutes, even though she was at the meeting.
Peter, I don't understand.
Yeah. I was afraid that this was gonna get ugly at this point.
It is. It's ugly. Downright ugly.
I do apologize. This afternoon, I couldn't read the letter "B" in any documents.
Oh.
It was disconcerting.
So, we'll add that also. Leanne, under Members of Public, Leanne, for Leanne Parker, it's actually L-E-E and then a separate word, A-N-N-E. And then down under the SLP painting staining bids, near the end of the second paragraph, certification is misspelled.
You're looking at the, which one did you go by?
August 19.
Please.
And then in the next sentence, matter is missing a T. Then down under the next section, the Meeting House Historic Building Registry, the first sentence, preservation, is misspelled. And then about halfway down through the paragraph, after the...
Well, do a flash for me.
Sorry, sorry. I'm just used to making these changes in your PDF, so I just, I blow through it. I'm not used to having to actually explain them to you. Sorry.
You can just write them down. Leanne I got, although that's been going on for years.
Yeah. What else?
Shelby. SLP.
Down under SLP, the last sentence of the second paragraph.
Yeah.
Lead abatement certification, certification is misspelled.
What was that spelled?
And then in that very next sentence, the second word, the matter, is just missing a T. Matter is missing a T.
There's like two Ts. How would you know that?
And then Meeting House Historic Building Registry, the first sentence, historic preservation, preservation is misspelled. So, you can just read that out.
I'm gonna have to talk to these spell checkers.
I know, I know. And then about two-thirds of the way down the paragraph, after the reference to the Dutton Farmhouse, there's a historic consultant. Historic is just missing a C at the end of it.
Hey.
All right. And then down where you referenced the amount, it's listed as 5,100, but it should be 1,500.
I got one you missed here.
Okay.
You had, did you have something else on page one, Bruce?
I think so. Just above the National Register part?
Yeah.
Get these glasses, I see that. But had an appointment, but had an appointment at the Dutton Farmhouse? I don't even know what that means, that statement. You see what I'm saying? Just above National Register?
Yeah, it's, it's at the, at the property. It was a person who was looking at the property, yeah.
But had an appointment at Dutton Farmhouse? So, okay, okay, I know that.
I think it's okay.
Yeah, okay, no big deal.
Anything else on page one, Gwen? Okay, on page two, the continue, or the first full sentence, I guess, there's a reference to Ms. Jolson, Ms. Jilson's. It should actually be Ms. Parker's, because it was Leanne Parker, not Leanne Jolson.
Oh, that's why I misspelled Leanne.
Well, you're probably right, 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 exactly. And then at the end of that paragraph, Mr. Mello with a W, we just need to remove this W.
I missed it. You did?
Which he didn't even notice at the moment.
Ah, so what then?
You got that?
Must be the glasses.
Yeah, are you guys still gonna pay me?
Yeah, I think so. We'll see. Let's not get out of ourselves.
Not gonna get out of ourselves.
Down under education tax rate, the second sentence, just November and February each have some of the typos in them. And that was all I had for the remainder of it. Gwen, did you have any other?
No others.
No.
Bruce, anything else? Shelby, any other changes for you on the minutes, other than what I've noted?
No, I think that was very thorough.
Okay. Now, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes from August 19 as amended. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Gwen. Any further discussion? Here are none. All those in favor of approving the minutes from August 19 as amended signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, then the minutes from August 19 are approved. Then we'll just quickly do the minutes from the August 25 emergency meeting.
All right, down there.
Did Gwen or Bruce have any changes to the emergency meeting minutes?
No.
Okay. Then I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes from the August 25 emergency meeting as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Bruce. Any discussion? Here are none. All those in favor of approving the minutes from the August 25 emergency meeting as presented signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Me.
So, they have approved with one abstention. All right. And that cleans up all of our minutes. We've been joined by Ron Bell, who's our design engineer for the Salt and Sand Shed project. Hi, Ron. Are you there, Ron?
I think this isn't me. Okay. I think I'm there.
Let me get around, do it.
Let's see.
Oh, you can hear me.
I think I can.
I think Ron's trying to sort out his microphone, or speaker, or camera, perhaps.
Can you hear me, or?
We can't hear you, yeah.
Oh, super. Okay. Yeah. How good is it?
So, um, oh, hi, Ron.
There it is.
Now, your camera's working too.
Yeah, great.
So, just to lay out for people briefly, so as I mentioned at the beginning, both Margo and Ron are here to do sort of a quick presentation about the Salt and Sand Shed project that we have in progress. This is mainly to allow for any of us to ask questions, but as well as any of the members of the public who may have wanted to attend to ask questions or have anything presented to them. I will point out that there's currently no members of the public present, other than Bex from West River Valley Thrives. But so, I think, I think the brief idea, and Margo, correct me if I'm wrong, I think the brief idea was that maybe Margo would do a quick sort of introduction overview of the project, and then maybe Ron would just kind of walk us through the plans, and then we'd open it up for questions, probably. Does that make sense to you guys?
Mm-hmm, sure.
All right. So, with that, Margo, do you wanna, do you wanna kick us off with a little overview of the project?
Hello, everyone. It's nice to be able to attend your meeting and be able to update you a little bit on the Salt Shed project. So, most of you, I think, are familiar with this project, but just in case some of the viewing public for other meetings are not familiar with it, the Brookline Salt Town owns a salt shed that needed to be replaced and improved with a new salt shed. So, a proposal was put in, and a grant was received from the Vermont Agency of Transportation through the state of Vermont back in 2018 to work on the salt shed redesign and implementation. And Wyndham Regional was hired as the local project manager, and so I'm representing Wyndham Regional Commission, and working with the town, and working with Beach Hands, and with Ron Bell, who is the contractor, the engineering contractor, that the town has hired to do the designs for the salt shed project, and he's with Bell Engineering, and he's gonna do most of the talking this evening. So, I just wanted to sort of introduce the team, and, you know, if the Select Board and members of the public do have questions about this project, you can always contact me at Wyndham Regional, and we're happy to assist. But I want to introduce Ron, who's going to talk a little bit about the project and the work that he's been doing. We, just in terms of the timeline, we are coming to a close on sort of the first phase of this project, which is the project, sometimes referred to as project description, which includes an initial design. The project is out for environmental review right now, and once we hear back from the environmental review, then we'll be able to move into the next phase, which is firming up more of the design plans, going to a 60%. So, we're sort of in a pattern of waiting to see what the environmental review comes back with. We don't anticipate any difficulties with that, but they just do have to review all projects, and then we'll be able to move into the next part of the design phase. So, Ron, do you wanna talk about the design?
Yeah, sure. And so, Margo, you have the PDFs, is there, or does everyone have a copy of the plans?
We can share the screen if...
Yeah.
All right. If I'm able to. David, do I have permission to?
Oh, you should be able to, yeah. You should be able to. At the bottom of your screen, you should have the ability to share the screen.
Okay. Let me just pull it up on my screen first, because I didn't actually have it open, but it won't take me long. So, while I'm pulling that up, Ron, if you wanna talk, you can.
Okay. Or if it's easier, I have, I have all the plans on a thumb drive. I could put them into my...
Oh, I have it right here. I'm just going through and finding it.
Sure, I'm gonna share that. So...
I'll also add, just before you start, Ron, that we have printed, we have printed copies of it for the people who are here in the office, so we're looking at references as well. Yeah.
So, yeah, so a few years ago, I know with Archie Clark there, and then put a, put a plan together, and then I guess there was money's available, and so then it went out of bid, and sort of, so I revised the plans a bit, and it's basically a 44 wide in the front by, um, 30, yeah.
While you're looking that up, Ron, David?
Yeah.
The host needs to enable screen sharing for participants?
It seems like it's already...
Yeah, it says host is disabled participants screen sharing.
Try it again now. I just toggle it, kind of come forth, see if they...
Now it'll work.
Now it will, okay, cool.
Oh, super. Okay. So, that's, actually, that's not quite the latest...
Oh, that's not the latest.
We're not close. I, one thing that came up is I had a little soil water retention swell in, and it was decided, just to eliminate that. The soils are really free draining and very little slope, so things shouldn't infiltrate without, without the pond. So, they just thought, well, this is one additional cost that we really probably don't need, and so that pond was eliminated, but I think pretty much everything else is there...
This is the pond here that he's talking about?
Yeah, and, and, to beat it. But the, the building, the salt sheds in orange, and it's where the, the existing salt shed is, just slightly rotating in it. And so, it, it, one thing nice about that site, it's fairly well-buffeted from the roadway. There's, between that and the, and the road to the west, it's, there's some pretty good tree cover. So, we just decided, well, we'll leave it right there. We really couldn't encroach it on the, on the embankment anywhere that it is. There is the river corridor that kind of, it's, the state comes up with a river corridor, it goes in and out, and, and it kind of cuts right through the, the existing driveway of the site. So, we, we just left it right where it is. It's a little, it's bigger, obviously, than the old one. So, there's, it's a partitioned building, the, the right side, the larger side is for sand, and the smaller side is for salt. And I'm not sure if you have, you have a question there? It's fairly straightforward. It has a fairly, some of the more significant costs are the concrete, because unlike a, you know, building foundation where you have the, the deck of the building holding, holding the top of the concrete type, this, this building and the several others essentially cantilevered. So, it has a big footing, and a big footings, and it's almost essentially like a retaining wall design. The, the, some of those, what, 14 feet, I think, from the footing. And then there, you know, good four people have great cross protection, and it give a little counterbalance on the, on the toe and the heel of the, of the retaining wall. And then above that, there's just a stick-framed wall with some bracing, and open in the front, and then the roof. It's kind of a simple building, but the cost keep it up there mainly because of the concrete. And I did look at, the other way to approach it is to have, you know, smaller footing, and maybe a little thinner walls, and then put counterforts in, but that, the cost of, I checked in with some contractors, and the, the cost of doing the counterforts sort of offset the, the cost of the additional, of the concrete, the way they have it laid out now. So, so, yeah, it seems to be the most effective way to go about it. These walls do take a little pounding from the front-end loaders, and then the, and just the, the load of the sand and salt piles, so. Yeah, so that's the basic building. It has metal siding and a metal roof, whatever color, you know, I think I put on the plan for screen, but it could be any color, the town decides.
Love working with them.
The, ETRN's did, their original, a plan, they used to put out a plan for a salt shed, and this is pretty much modeled after that, and they had doors, but I guess the town would rather not, not put doors on. It's just one more thing that, you know, to deal with, opening and closing doors in the middle of the night when you're trying to get the sand and salt out. So, because it's quite deep, the sand and salt can be back in from the, from the, from the doorways and not get wet. So, there's, I think, five civil sheets, which, there's the, the basic site plan, there's driveway brading. To get one of the, get the big salt trucks in, we widened the drive quite, up quite a bit, but it just generally slopes towards the west. And so, there's driveway, a little bit of driveway work, then the site work for the building, the, the concrete, and then the carpentry. So, there's, there's control measures that need to go in, silts and whatnot, some fencing to limit the area of disturbance. And then there's two sheets where the, that back out the building plans. And so, they're, they're pretty far along. I mean, I ran through, I have a number of structural programs, and one is doing, doing wind. So, I put it in, it's called the RISA, it's a finite element analysis program. It does a really good job of evaluating wind, and when I did that, it turned out it needed to have some wind bracing. So, I added the wind bracing into the building, and other than that, it's a real simple building. Yeah, so the, I did, did know what a cost estimate for the project, too. The total came in to around 220,000. And again, the, the, one of the larger numbers was concrete, that's 55,000. Then the width frame, stem walls, is about, that came to about 22. And then the roofing aside, again, that's a little expensive, but these are just kind of engineering estimates, and when, when it goes out to bid, it just kind of depends on how busy people are, and, and, you know, and who's available to bid on it. But I think it is our concern, concerning numbers that I put together.
Okay. That's good.
Yeah, I don't know, so, if, I could go over things a little more detail, but if there's, maybe just open it up for...
Yeah, exactly, yeah. Yeah, why don't we do that? Let's just, we'll just take a quick spin around each of the board members to see if anybody has any questions. Gwen, do you have any questions for Margo or Ron, based on this?
No questions.
Bruce, how about you? Any questions at the moment?
Just one for Margo. Early on in your explanation, you said, if I got it right, going to 60%, does that mean that you're gonna be, we're gonna be about 60% of what we need to do to get done before it goes to bid? Is that what that means?
So, that's just the next phase in the design step, and Ron has actually done quite a bit, but it's just taking the plans to a next level of detail.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I had...
Bruce? Yeah, we'll get to you, Guy, hang on. Shelby, any questions for you at the moment?
No questions right now.
Okay. Guy?
Just one quick question. In the, the site plan, I don't see that little shed that we have for the residents to gather salt. Well, is that still gonna be part of the, is that still in the plan that's there now? I see it's, I see the driveway, but it doesn't show that little building where we have the shed.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay, I guess I didn't put that on the plan. I can add that, yeah. Or, sorry about that.
Okay. No, I just wanted to make sure that that's still gonna be part of the town, you know, what we're doing in the town.
Well, it's funny, I don't recall the, so there's a small shed for sand?
Well, yeah, there's a, and I guess, I don't know that, is that necessarily anything that was going to be touched or changed by this process?
Not that I know of, but I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't eliminated, because I don't see anything indicating it yet.
Yeah. So, right by the, by the entrance to the driveway, like, right to the right of the gates, before the gates, before the gates, there's a small shed where we put...
Okay, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I, I didn't do anything with that. I don't know if it needs any improvement, or...
No.
I don't think it, I don't think it does. I think it's just clarifying that there, we're not gonna get rid of it during this process or something.
Oh, okay. Yeah. Yeah, I don't, I don't think so.
Thank you.
Anything else, Guy?
No.
Mark, did you have any questions?
No, I, I feel like the, everything you talked about, I was aware of, and everything looks good.
I don't know that, I don't know that there's a whole lot more for us to talk about at the moment, unless, I guess I'll give both Ron and Margo, if you guys have any other closing thoughts, but thank you. And I'll also say, thank you both for attending and providing this and keeping us updated on everything. We appreciate it.
Yeah. Well, I just might add, I mean, as far as the 60%, I mean, that's where it's at in the process, but the plans, I think, are pretty complete, so at this point, I think the only thing I really have to do is put the specifications together, which would, you know, you know, the detail, what kinds of insurance features you have, and, you know, time to construct, all the specifics for the materials. And ETRN's has most of that, it just have to get it into the right format that fits this project. But that, I think, unless ETRN's comes up with things they want me to change, I think I'm pretty much there, and then other than putting the specifications together, so that, that won't take long. Yeah, so, yeah, I think we're, we're just about there. Yeah, so...
Margo, do you have a sense, or maybe Ron as well, of how long you might be waiting for the environmental feedback at this point? Like, do you have any sense of how soon or not soon you might hear back on that?
When we first submitted that, they said it could be three years or months. So, that was submitted in June, so we're still within that timeframe.
Yeah, so hopefully we're getting...
So, it could, you know, and I think it's just a matter of where they're at in the review process.
Right. Okay.
I did, you know, go, there's a A and R ad list, you can... I, I did, uh, you know, go, there's a A and R ad list, uh, you can click on the site and then you can pull up all the different, uh, you know, levels and, and there's just a, a quite a lot of information. I didn't, we go through that and nothing popped up. Uh, so I think it should be clear, you know?
Excellent.
I didn't, I didn't see anything that jumped out at me.
Great.
Yeah.
We'll keep our fingers crossed on that also.
Yeah, you know, nothing historical about the site that I...
Right, I mean, I don't think there's any, I don't think we were necessarily anticipating there being any issues with that either, hopefully, but I guess we'll see.
Is it fair to say that we'll start, is it fair to say that we'll start the project next spring?
Um, I don't know if you guys can hear, that question from Guy is, is basically, and I guess we'll ask each of your opinion, do you think it's fair to think that we can start, we might be in a position to start construction on this by the spring?
Oh, sure, oh, definitely, yeah, yeah. Will your existing facility make it through the winter, uh, this next winter or...
Yeah, I think, I think, you know, we, we can always, we've done some work over the last couple of years to shore things up a little bit and maybe we might need to do a little bit of that as well, but I think it's, it's all workable, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah, oh, definitely, yeah. I would say if you were trying to get going this fall, there is kind of a run on press trade lumber and there's a fair amount in this built, uh, structure, so, uh, maybe you could, I, I hear the prices will go back down in about three months, but right now it's even hard to get.
Yeah, right. No, I mean, I think at this point we would just be, you know, hopefully getting it going in the spring would be good for us.
Yeah, right, maybe go out in the, uh, winter and, and have it ready to go.
Exactly.
Yeah, sure.
Maybe great if it works out. Um, okay, well, so thank both of you, uh, again, for your time and all your efforts on this and, uh, if there's anything you need from us, I'll be, so, we'll, thank you, yeah?
And, um, you know, we look forward to continuing to work this, see this project through to completion.
Yeah.
So continue to be in touch.
We do too.
That's great. Thanks, guys.
Have a good night, everyone.
You too, have a good rest of your year.
Thank you.
Get rid of the old sort of sand. Yeah, oh, yeah, that's quick.
Okay, uh, moving on to six B, um, which is plowing and sanding RFPs. Um, so I sent out to everybody, uh, uh, draft copies of it. I didn't make copies, uh, Mark and Guy, I didn't make copies for you guys. Um, what I'll say, we can talk them through, what I'll say is that they're exactly the same as what we used last year or the year before last. So just to refresh people's memory, um, as far as plowing and sanding is concerned, we didn't do a bid, we didn't do an RFP last year because we did one two years ago, um, which AS Clark, uh, was the low and only bidder on and they, um, gave, offered us a two-year locked-in price, which we took. So we didn't put it out for bid last year, but it's due to be put out for bid again. So, um, let's just talk through the RFP. It's basically, you know, winter plowing and sanding for the season. None of the details have changed. It includes plowing, the recycling center, the town hall parking lot, driveway access at the meeting house, um, a bid for fixed price. We're saying, assuming that we approve it tonight, that sealed bids will be opened at 6:30 on September 16th at the meeting. Um, we reserve the right to reject any bids or all that stuff. Um, we also put in it, like we did last time, that we'll consider accepting a two-year contract for winter plowing and sanding. Um, there's no guarantee that we will award that, but one and two-year bids will be accepted with the second-year bid price clearly indicated. One thing I did change was that, uh, in the past, because when we did this before, um, our town clerk was also our, uh, road commissioner, I changed the contact information, Mark, to be you, so that if people have questions or want further information, I have it, I have them calling you on your cell phone. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so that's, that's what the winter plowing and sanding, um, RFP looks like. Uh, and so I think I'd like to go ahead and make a motion that we approve the, uh, winter plowing and sanding RFP as presented. Is there a second to that motion? Then we'll discuss it.
Second.
Seconded by Bruce. Um, any, I'll go around everybody just to clarify if anybody has any questions or concerns. Gwen, do you have any questions on this RFP or any concerns?
I don't know.
Bruce, any questions or concerns? Yeah, the plan is to put, the reformer and those people, their, their deadlines are the same for this weekend, so if I get it in tomorrow morning, it'll be in, it'll be published Saturday. And then we'll also, I'll send it to Guy so he can post it on the website.
Yep.
Um, so, yeah, so Bruce, any question?
All good.
Um, Shelby, any questions or concerns about the plowing and sanding RFP?
Nope.
Okay, uh, all right, then we'll call that the end of discussion and all those in favor of approving the winter plowing and sanding RFP as presented signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? All right, that RFP is approved. Then we have the winter sand, uh, RFP, which is also, is the same as the one that we published last year, um, which is basically, you know, this is for bids for the actual sand. Um, and like in the past, we have the requirement that you have to provide a sample of the material, um, for us to evaluate, for the road supervisor to evaluate. Uh, again, we reserve the right to inspect any of the, um, deliveries and make sure that meets our standards throughout, uh, the process. Um, and we can reject any bids. This is another situation where I change the contact information to be Mark at your cell phone number if anybody has any questions. And again, we would open these at 6:30 on September 16th at the next select board meeting. So I'm gonna make a motion on this one as well. So I would, uh, move that we approve the winter sand 2021, 2020, 2021 season RFP as presented. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Gwen. Uh, so for discussion, let me just go around, Gwen, did you have any questions or concerns about this one?
No, I read both of the, of the RFPs under it all.
Okay. Shelby, any questions or concerns about the sand RFP?
Nope, those good.
Okay, all right, then, uh, all those in favor of approving the winter sand 2020, 2021 season RFP as presented signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Any extensions? All right, so both of those are approved and I will get those to the reformer tomorrow morning and to Guy. Okay. Um, now moving right along to old business. Uh, first up is seven A, uh, revisiting the SLP painting and staining bids. One thing I wanted to clarify about the bids, uh, in addition to, I think we all saw the email exchange that, uh, Bruce had with Mo Momini to clarify some stuff. Mo has also sent, uh, sent in a letter clarifying some details about his bid, um, which I'm gonna go ahead and very quickly read that letter, just so there's no confusion about it. Um, so it's about the 624 Grasswood Rapid Road project. Um, he says, "The building at 624 Grasswood Rapid Road contains lead paint and needs to be treated according to the U.S. EPA Lead Renovation Repair and Painting Program. Momini Painters is a U.S. EPA Lead Safe Certified Firm and is trained in the use of Lead Safe Work Practices. The cost for us to do this project is $14,500, which is the same amount that is in his bid that we opened last time. Uh, and it includes all materials and labor. It also includes the following improvements in the scope of work slash specifications. One, we will apply two coats of stain to the west side, which he says is the front of the building, from the electric meter to the far right corner where the higher deck with stairs is located. Two, we will prime the metal bulkhead with a marine primer and apply two coats of acrylic roof paint that will be durable for many more years than the specified oil stain. Three, we will wash the building with bleach and trisodium phosphate to remove mold and mildew. This combination is more effective than just the trisodium phosphate on its own." Uh, and he said, "And four, uh, we will also have workman's comp insurance in addition to liability insurance. Uh, they remind us if they want to see examples of their work, uh, we can look at their website and they thank us for the opportunity to provide, uh, the Brookline Select Board request." So that was just something that came in after the back and forth that Bruce had with Mo Momini about clarifying equipment and things like that. Um, Bruce, do you wanna take over and...
Did Norm send you another letter? You mentioned that Norm sent something new?
I do not see anything new from Norm Holden. Uh, no.
Okay, so what did you learn?
We still have the original bids from himself and, um...
David Shaw.
David Shaw and Mo, but nothing, nothing new from, uh, Norm came in the mail anyway.
Okay, I woke up Thursday morning after a select board meeting and was having the shakes because I realized the numbers that they gave me must have been the old building, not the entire building. So I clarified, clarified. Mo called me, I didn't have to call him because he wanted to know how the bid went, and Norm Holden and I, I called him on Holden because we also worked over the windows, and he said, "No, no, it's the whole building." And the reason why, I've got two things that blindsided me, blindsided me through this whole thing. The first was the lead paint issue, which I already espoused to you all what I knew about that. And the second is the price. The price, and I have it, we have it ranked, that Norm Holden gives a quarter, $37,000. So when this all came down, I was kinda blown away Thursday morning, but anyway, fast-forward it a little bit. David Shaw has removed himself from the situation because of the obvious, because he's not certified with it. Uh, I thought they had a really nice bid, I told him so, I liked his wife a lot, Angie. I spent considerable weeks, I spent considerable time communicating and it came down and I thanked him and, but it just wasn't gonna work out because of that issue. Um, I've spent a lot of time with Mo Momini, I've spent a lot of time with Norm Holden. And what Norm Holden told me, and I, I guess he said 16, was it 16, he's got?
16,000.
I said, "Don't forget the way the bid was made with no materials, no materials at all." And he went back and figured it out and he said, "Well, I'm gonna add another five grand for that." So he's at 21 grand. Mo Momini's at 14.5 with everything. And if you remember, I put in there someplace, no lift.
Right, so let's talk a little bit about the lift. So did you discuss that with both?
Yes.
Norm and Bo?
Yes, and they both felt that they could do it from the ground, that they, that they have tall enough ladders. Basically what they do on the slopes is that you can hold out here. They're the pros.
So there's no need for anybody to ramp the lift from this point?
No, it's just great news for us.
That is good news.
For me, because it's logistically a pain and a tricky, but whatever. So that, that's all being said, um, I was disappointed in one respect because I was hoping to give you all an exact number of where our budget is. I thought that was appropriate, but I am not getting my questions answered, uh, from, from Sarah, there are about three of them. And so the best I can answer you as far as the budget goes is the way I see it by November...
Next year.
By November 1st, we'll have the money for this whole project. No taxpayer, no capital approval fund, all from Susie's. And I'll go into, when we talk about the building, about going forward with money that she's gonna be giving us from down there.
Um, okay, can I just ask, so what do we think, uh, at this point, have you had any, just in your discussions, has there been any indication from either Momini or Norm Holden on when, if we, if we accepted their bid, when would they likely intend to do?
Yes, real direct answer on that for you. Norm Holden, I'm guessing, a little bit, sometime next summer is my guess. Mo Momini, that was an interesting discussion because I was expecting him to say next September 30th, you know, because it's October 1st next year, but by completion date, I'll be facetious a little bit. But what he said to me was this, "I, I'm getting ready to do scheduling now for next year." He's just doing the putney, putney life right now that he bid on last year, so he gets behind, it's no secret. But he told me, and the way he put it was, he likes to do jobs on the outskirts before he does stuff close to go home. He didn't give you a definitive answer, to be straight with you about it, but he also threw it, because we started talking, I said, "You know, if you get this bid or not, you also have the opportunity to bid on the steeple." Because we talked about that, and he said, "If I got the bid on the steeple as well, I would do both at the same time." And so that's just a little nugget in the whole thing, but my guess is summer, I, I really don't have a definitive answer before I give out other...
That's fine, that's fine. I'll, I'll tell you why I'm asking that primarily, um, is because I, I'll just speaking for myself, I have a lot more confidence in our ability, in our having the money comfortably to be able to do this work next summer than I do this fall.
I agree.
So if either of the suppliers were interested in doing it yet this fall, like Dave was, I would have reservations about that from a financial standpoint, but I have less reservations about next year.
Not happening till spring. They, they can't do it, they just don't have the time.
Um, Guy, did you have a quick question?
Uh, just a quick question. Uh, with the person that was gonna do it for $7,500, the town was, in my opinion, gonna supply all the materials. And Mr. Momini is gonna supply all materials and everything else for the 14.
Correct, 14.5.
Yes, okay.
That's correct, that's accurate. And just to reiterate, we have the money by November 1st. And then when I go onto the building, uh, building part of the building update, I'll explain you more about that a little bit, that that's really a little bit out of, out of agenda. So I guess at this point, I'll make a proposal to accept a bid from Mo Momini for $14,500 because he could do it, there's no restrictions with him. He's, well, fine Bruce, I've known him for two years. You wanna do it next fall, it's not a big deal, so.
Okay, so you're making, so let's just clarify, so you're making a motion, make that a little more formally, okay?
I'm making a motion that we accept the bid from Mo Momini to do the paint and staining at 624 Grasswood Road, Susie's Old Paints, our daycare building, for $14,500, including all materials, no lift.
Okay, I'll second that motion. Now let's discuss it. Um, I'll say, I mean, I'll, I'll kick off and say, I think that this is a, I'm very surprised by how competitive the price is, um, and given that he's including the materials and the lift is now off, whatever, I, I'm much more comfortable about the idea of doing this than I thought I was going to be. Um, so I'm...
I am too.
I'm supportive of, of doing this next year at this point personally. Gwen, how are you feeling?
I'm impressed that he went to the extra step to verify what he was gonna provide and the quality of what he was providing, so I agree that it's a, a great, uh, I think it's a good bid.
Shelby, how is, what's your feeling about this at this point?
Um, I guess I'm, I'm just wondering, do we have an actual updated bid from him that details...
He just said?
Changes?
He just said?
Yes, that was what I read.
Okay, the letter.
The letter, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so it's really hard when I'm not here, none of these days are scanned over like in, I feel like I... You say it out loud, but it's hard to like hold on to the information.
Yeah, no, I, that's understandable. Um, yeah, I mean, it's, it's basically, it is, um, it is really actually the, now that I'm comparing it to his original bid, um, it is actually, though it was going to be a clarification, it's actually exactly the same as his original bid, um, which his original bid said it included all materials and labor.
Okay.
The bid?
Yeah.
But didn't it mention, I thought it mentioned the, the lift in the original bid.
Um, it did not... It did not, his did not mention the lift.
That's the way I had the clarification.
I think one of the other bidders made mention of the lift, and then we, we sort of got off onto that because our RFP had actually said that we would be responsible for providing the lift. But now, both of the remaining vendors who are in the running have both clarified that they would not need a lift of any kind.
Okay. Um, I was like, I guess I don't really have to be, I'm sorry, I just needed to, I'm not seeing it, I just wanted to make sure I was on the right page.
Yeah, no, that makes sense.
Um, no, I mean, it seems, I mean, I, I guess I don't spend a lot of time looking at the building, um, so I have to defer to everyone else in whether or not they feel like it needs to be painted, I'm guessing it does, it was being brought up. But, yeah, I mean, if, if we're going to have the funds, um, and so does it, like, what, what's the, I mean, does it really need to be painted?
Absolutely.
That's my only last question. I know I asked you this, you're on the table, and I'm just actually, definitely rare, you're a creative artist.
Sure, let's just give, well, let's give Bruce two minutes to answer that.
Well, I would need two minutes, thirty seconds will do the job. How's, how's that for rare? Shelby? The building has.
Bruce.
Wait, Patty, hi Shelby. The building has had, had one coat of paint on it for thirty years, and I verified that with both the painters, and they agree with me. It was one coat of paint that you can actually see the trim underneath it. The stain, I don't know how long the stain's been on there, but I can go by with my hand and wipe the stain off with my hand. The stain should actually be redone, we'll discuss this with them too as well, eight to ten years, but the painting should last twenty, maybe even more, depending on, depending on the size of it.
So make it short, yes.
Make it short, I'll just give you two minutes, sorry guys, but the answer to your question is, one coat of paint, thirty years.
Okay, thank you, I, I was trying, yeah, I wasn't, any like, I wasn't like, it wasn't challenging, I was just.
Well, I know that.
Like acid.
Yeah, right.
Okay, so I actually, I don't know, I, I don't see any, anything wrong with it, I, I have the most, I was most interested in their bid anyway because of the, um, lid paint, um, certification, because we could also be in a childcare facility, and it makes sense, like they said, even if the other painters are equally as capable and have the experience and actual layer of certification, I think for access, um, it had, while having this work done and it being currently a childcare facility, so I, I, I think if the bid looks great.
Yeah, I totally agree, I think, and that, I think that's a very good point. Okay, any other discussion or points from anyone before we vote? All right, then all those in favor of the motion to accept the bid from Mo Momini for fourteen thousand five hundred dollars, including all materials and labor for exterior painting of the six twenty four grassy brick road building, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any? Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, then we have accepted that bid. And this will segue nicely, well, first I'll say thank you Bruce for all of the work that you've done on figuring all this out and talking with these guys and.
My pleasure.
And working on it.
My pleasure.
And now we'll segue into.
We have a great relationship with those people.
Building update.
Okay, and saying that, Norm Holden's been, has done a great job on the windows, have a great relationship with them, he's going, him, he's going to be disappointed, but he can bid on it.
That's okay.
And we have a little paperwork, which I can mention in a minute, but I'd like to back up for a second, and you know, did you all see my email that I sent out to Joseph for everybody else about the ground schoolhouse?
Yes. Yep.
And I'm not going, I'm just going to say that I'm going to let that lay for a month or so, before we get into the budget, and I'm hoping that, I try to be positive in it, that people will pick up the ball and maybe I don't have to push hard on it, but I think my point is that we need to toot sweet, get the tushies in the gear and take care of the inside out of the building. So I'm hoping that, that we can get all the things I mentioned in, in that little expos that I had there, the points that I made six or seven months, we'll. The church. Okay. Nothing about the church right now, but this, other than the steeple, which don't be discussed. But Suzie's, like I said, the windows are now done at end. Thank you. It came out wonderful, and my hero Dave, and my hero, and my hero Dave, Dave Zalesko did an incredible job back there, he knew he, he had three extra windows left in the infant room for Monday morning, and he went back on, back there, went Sunday afternoon and did it. Jeez, what hell the guy. We're just about done, we're getting ready to put, we're going to put up on the outside, we've replaced all the crappy boards on the, the framing of the outside of the windows, and we're getting ready to put up the storms, moving forward with Dave, I got one crown molding I missed last year that's rotten on the entranceway, he's going to replace, and then we're going to do a final inspection around, if there's anything else I think should be done, will get done, so that Mo, Mo can come in next year and slam right through it and do a good quick help for us without any repercussions. Also going to have Dave, when we're done, we're going to go through every single freaking window, because the windows in the foyer, we couldn't get open, I broke one of the studs off and he was able to fix them. My hero. So we're going to go, and I know that Suzie, being fifty one years old, just taking two other new daycares on, she's now got five, she's in for, for the long haul. So with that being said, I want to make sure that all those windows are functioning, that they are, I'm going to clean them with, actually, I'm going to clean them with a penetrating order, because they haven't touched it thirty years, and there's dirt and markings, you can't hold them away, you know, and I know that basically, they're not going to be touched for a little ten years, so we're going to take a day and we're going to go through and clean all those windows, meaning the runners are making sure they open and close. He replaced, fixed a couple of doors, and we're getting close to the end. Then I'm going to move forward with hopefully calling an electrician to fix that heater downstairs that one part of the zone's not working, and expenses, which are probably going to be on your mind. Like I said, I was not able to give you an exact number, which is disappointing to me, but for all intents and purposes, we're going to have that fourteen thousand five hundred dollars by November one, barring a major catastrophe. But I asked Sarah about three specific questions, and one was a person here last Saturday, she couldn't stick and she couldn't do the, so I asked her, could you please give me an updated budget of what we've got on the front, so I can tell Select Board on Wednesday night and do as well as she can, so we have the payables involved? I never got it.
So that. I will say that particularly with the tax situation.
Maybe she was tied up.
She's been here a lot, printing the bills and we were here stuffing envelopes, mailing the bills and stuff, so it's, you know, it's, but yeah, let's, let's, I, I can help you try to follow up with that and try to.
Okay, so I really wanted to give you a, a number today, so it's like a brag.
Can I ask, can I ask a follow-up question, though, that we had from last time? Are you able to determine exactly how much money we have paid?
On the windows?
Dave Zalesko on the repair of the win, the same windows that Norm repainted?
Yes, we're about, with, 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 I'm going to tell you, W W, you're a hundred little, hundred dollars in materials, about six to seven for a day, and a day what he does is builds, he itemizes every little thing he does, so part of that was the other work that he did in the foyer, and the work he did on the, on the doors. So I looked at the bills, and I'm thinking seven hundred bucks, right at that city. So all, all concerned.
So you think about seven hundred bucks of Dave's month, Dave's cost with, on those same windows?
Right, with the payments.
Not just the windows, but the things too.
Well, that's what I, that's what I don't want to know, I mean, quite frankly, what I want to know, and I think what Joseph wanted to know, was on those windows, the same windows that we just paid Norm Holden fifty five hundred dollars to, how much additional money have we spent on those windows? Not on other stuff as well, but just on those windows?
Oh, not the framing and as, just the windows themselves? Oh, it's a little less than that then, I'd say in the five hundred range, five, maybe six. We haven't spent more than seven, eight on him totally. It's hard to get an exact number, because like I said, because of the way he makes the bills out, but I took what he had said, and what at the time that he put in, and said, try to, and I was, say seven hundred bucks, and I think we're right there. And that's, that's with the framing on the outside of the building. So I don't know if that helps you or not.
Well, I mean, I guess, again, I mean, I think it, I think it goes to the idea of trying to figure out, and, and I'm, I'm, I'm somewhat, I'm somewhat arguing Joseph's point because he's not here, but I think I'm going to go so far as to say that I believe what Joseph's point was, was that if we had spent eleven thousand dollars, ten thousand dollars, or whatever it might have been, to fully replace those windows, that's how much it would have cost to have had new, fully functional windows. We've paid Norm Holden fifty five hundred dollars to repaint those windows, but then we've also paid Dave five or seven hundred dollars or something like that to make them functional again. So really, the comparison between the overall costs is, maybe it's six thousand dollars that we spent on those. I'll say, I'm not arguing that that isn't a good idea, because I'll freely admit, I was against even spending ten thousand dollars, even though there would have been new windows, but I think that was the discussion. I think what we wanted to try to get was, okay, as exact as we can be, how much have these windows cost us to fix? So you're saying?
Not more than seven.
Six, six thousand to sixty two hundred dollars?
I would be, I'd be happy to even try and narrow it further, but like I said, he did some, he did some outside trim work, he did some rope work, you know, he did some trim work on the inside, so I think the best way to resolve this, although he's happy, is for me to itemize it. He spent this amount of hours and this amount of cost on doing the trim, he did this amount of hours, and he did the rope, would that be okay?
Well, again, I'm not the one who asked for this, so I'm not completely sure what would be helpful, but in my opinion, if we could nail it down to within a couple hundred dollars, I think that's close enough.
You're there.
So you're, so it's, it's fair for us to say that the cost of repairing those windows was somewhere between six thousand and sixty two hundred dollars, probably.
Right there.
Right? Is that fair?
I would say that's pretty close.
Okay, so let's, let's assume that's the case, and I mean, we can, we can have a further discussion about it when Joseph is back, goes to the next meeting, but I just, I just want to make sure we follow it up on that, because we, we did want to follow up.
You did ask, and I, I did what I did.
So sorry, Bruce, any other building?
Uh, no, the only other thing I want to say is that I've told you about the work that I'm trying to finish by November, other than having the regular stuff like the furnace being checked, maybe Mark and I can do that damn, the septic thing or dig or whatever, service bowl is probably to do. This old model stuff, the heater I mentioned.
Fire extinguishers all been taken care of?
Yeah, all been taken care of, the part of this, this whole repair, the work over. If I can keep code three, the plumber, and Nancy Berg out of the building, we're millionaires. But I can say this, by, by November one, we'll have the fourteen five. And just so that you keep it back in mind, starting December, we're going to be completing, getting eighteen hundred dollars a month, we know that from Suzie's, and for the following year, we get twenty two thousand eight hundred dollars from her, then we've, we've got to find a hole to put that money in, I have ideas for that. And one of the ideas I'll just fully lay is helping the meeting house a bit, you can talk about this down the road, especially with the steeple, that might not even be a bad idea.
Not today.
No, not on the agenda.
Yeah.
Okay, we can bring that down the road someplace, that's fine. So I'm happy with a little bit of how to say, and you ask, ask questions if you have any more questions.
Cool.
Follow up, you know the work I'm going to do.
Cool, all right, thank you for all of that, that's all it was. Okay, moving on to seven C.
Original, my God.
So, uh, I sent around the speeding and tire burn averages or whatever, I sent around the forwarded the email to everybody that Dot received and forwarded to me, from Melissa Masters, who lives up on Harris Hill, about another incident of people burning tires late at night, I guess, although I'm not sure that they actually, around midnight, I guess, and speeding and potentially racing around the curve around there. I, I put it on the agenda so, just so we can discuss it again and see if people have thoughts, like we've talked about before, on how, how we, what, if anything, we might effectively do about this. I'll just kick off for myself for saying, you know, I went back and refreshed my memory and, you know, we currently have budgeted about five hundred and ten dollars for law enforcement. You know, we used to budget more, we used to budget three thousand dollars for it, because we used to be able to get the state police to come possibly an hour a week and do this, and when they stopped offering us the contract, we understandably cut, allow that money out of the budget because we weren't going to spend it, because nobody was going to come here anyway. I'll just say for myself, every time I hear about these situations with people doing the burning tires or racing around town, I don't know how we can solve this without having law enforcement in the community, and that, I don't know how we can do that without hiring the sheriff's department or Vermont State Police to sit somewhere for some period of time.
Identify who's doing it.
Some amount of, yeah, because I don't, I don't see any other way that this has ever been solved.
I've seen the state police now a couple of times in town, and the sheriff's department.
I saw two, two back to back.
I think they'll wear, you know, they may be doing their own thing, but.
Yeah, and I mean, you know, when we, when we've talked about this in the past, I mean, when we talked about it, whatever, two months ago, maybe, I think the advice we had for people was for people to call the state police.
Exactly.
And tell them about this, and, and provide as much detail as anybody could, and then we saw an uptick in state police being in town, and it seemed like maybe it dropped off a little bit because they were here more. So maybe we're just going to keep going through these kinds of cycles. I guess I'll just throw out there that we could, if we were, I've yet to be able to see enough information from anyone to have an idea of if there was a consistent pattern to this, where we might be able to hire the sheriff or a state police trooper to sit somewhere for four hours. Given that it seems to be spread all over the place, short of having somebody here all the time, I'm not exactly sure how we, how we would use money wisely to try to combat it, but that's just my opinion based on some. Gwen, what's your feeling about the situation, sort of, and what we may or may not do?
Well, we discussed this to death, and it's kind of hard when you can't even identify the car, because it's going so fast, you can't read his plates.
Boy, damn.
Or it's so dark, you can't, you know, but it's sad when people are waking up or smelling the tire burning, that's what amazed me, and that's just, I guess, people have just got to continue complaining, maybe then the cops will be even here more often.
I think it's narrowed down to a handful of vehicles.
Yeah.
And like, say, if you could get a description and license plate number, and maybe a time and day that it's more popular, that we could reach out to the police and have them.
And have somebody give them that, it's a good.
Yeah. I think the police are holding a little bit to themselves, they know a lot more than they're telling us, and.
Right.
It's just a matter of time before, I think, that they.
I hope.
Yeah, no, they're, they're not fools, I mean, they're in town not just because they came here to say hello, they're doing some work, and I suspect that, that the people complaining have certainly opened up the floodgates for the state police to say, well, we need to do something here before someone gets hurt.
Bruce, what's your thinking about?
Yeah, all three of you, and you two, all made really good points, Dave, back to what you were saying, as we, three, four years ago, with that group, thinking about what to do, but having police force in town, it just so happens, I was coming out of Radway Hill tonight, and two sheriffs, back to back, were coming out of town, and I'm like, ooh, my goodness, weird, I think Gwen's got the key. People complain, when you get letters like this online, we should respond back and kind of maybe put something on Julie's website saying, we're having a ongoing problem with this going on, people need to call the state police or sheriff's department.
You might want to include that in that letter from the Lieutenant French.
Yeah, it's one of the points that I'm, yeah, right, it's one of the points.
But your point is correct, and that it's difficult. It's next to impossible. Like the day that you and I were together on, when you were working the excavator, and just 10 minutes before, I got passed over down here. I was going down to here, and somebody passed me, and it was on the roof, doing like 45, 50, going down very super quick. Okay, that's great. And one of those kids comes out of the grass, and a killer kid, you know...
Or a deer.
Or a deer. The crap's gotta stop.
Shelby, how about you? What's your thoughts on the subject?
Um, yeah, I mean, kind of same situation as we all are. It's coming up again. There's no real great solution. So I was doing some research on rural, small-town policing. And this is not a situation that's unique to Vermont. It's everywhere. It's really difficult to have a police presence in small-town area to target these isolated incidences that turn into this strain. Because we don't generally, we don't have the kind of population that we're gonna be controlled enough to kind of just catch them by coincidence. So my only thought is that if we do have a budget for law enforcement in general, I don't know if it might not hurt to have a contract with a, whether it's the state police or the Marin County Sheriff, to have, even if it's only a monthly presence. But then also, because we have that relationship, use that relationship to create more of an open dialogue. Yes, everyone should call the cops when this stuff happens, but also maybe create a relationship between the board and the police so that we're communicating more. It seems like the more communication we have going on, the more they would be able to respond to our needs as opposed to just kind of swinging, you know, being more random when they do come to town. And the perfect solution, wouldn't help like tomorrow, but...
Right. What I'll say, of course, about the, at least in the case of the state police, and it was previously the case with the sheriff's department, years before that. I mean, the state police stopped offering to give us a contract two years ago, and have not offered to contract with us since then. Whether now a situation might be different in some fashion, or they might be more open to doing something, and the sheriff, at the very least, the sheriff's department seems to be a little more interested in reaching out to communities recently than they have been. I guess there, you know, there could be the possibility that we, that we might be able to come up with some kind of contract for that. The only thing I'll say is, currently at least, and we can discuss this when we get to budgeting for next year, currently, we've budgeted $510 for the year, which would be, at best, 10 hours for the year of law enforcement. So we obviously have to rethink some of our budgeting if we, if someone was willing to offer us a contract, and if we actually thought we wanted to do something, even on a minimal couple hours a month basis.
I just wanted to say that since the COVID-19 shutdown, I think the state police kind of went into like a neutral, they were only responding to, you know, very important incidences. Traffic violations kind of have been on the slide, you know, since everything shut down. So I think people that are doing the offending are aware of this, and therefore, they're thinking they're getting away.
Yeah.
This kind of stuff.
See, no presence?
Yeah, it's obvious. So you kind of need to set an example, like, you know, having some patrol getting pulled over, and the word gets out, "Watch out for the Steeves over there," or "Sheriff."
And getting back to Guy's point, I mean, I will, and I started to draft a response back to the state police based on the letter that they sent us. And I'll have that for people to review at the next meeting. And we'll, you know, we can incorporate this into that, as we were going to, because this is certainly one of the concerns of our town. And I think to a point that Shelby brought up last time when we talked about it, that just the sort of isolation that people feel in towns like ours from law enforcement, and what they might be able to do to try to be more of a presence and make people feel like there's more of a presence is something that hopefully they're gonna be prepared to deal with moving forward. Okay, any last thoughts on this before we move on? Thanks, everybody, for giving it the thought that you can. Okay, moving on to summary reports. Mr. Tanser.
The county clerk's office has been relatively busy. We've had a lot of real estate transactions, some of them were refis and so forth. The other thing is that the Secretary of State has notified us that they will be sending out absentee ballots starting September 21st, and everybody who's on the voted checklist will receive one. That doesn't mean you have to actually vote absentee, but you have that option. It's one of the options. You can vote absentee, or you still can come to the office and vote like you always normally did. So hopefully, we'll have a good turnout, and everybody will be happy.
So they would, if, since everybody's getting one, then they would just bring that absentee ballot in? Or just not worry about not doing anything with it?
When they come in, because they would issue an absentee ballot, they would have to sign an affidavit saying that they lost their ballot or didn't bring it with them. That's something that still has to be clarified, because the Secretary of State is mailing everybody one. So that's, stay tuned, that may change.
Okay. Yeah, because that could be a major source of confusion, I suppose, on the day, if people don't realize that.
That would be. Yeah, I'm sure they realize it.
Okay, thanks. Cool, thank you. Mark, what's going on?
Well, since our last meeting, I finished up installing some culverts. The machine came and went very fast. It seemed like time flew by. But to make it all short, we installed 13 culverts in one. And also did a great amount of ditch cleaning, moving log debris from ditches, cleaning culverts that were plugged. Though it made a lot of runouts or turnouts to correct water erosion. I took a lot of things off the list of maintenance that I was hoping to get to. However, the list still continues.
On my own.
But I was very impressed with the machine that we rented and its capabilities. I won't bore you with the details, but I was gonna have them send a brochure down just to show you the accomplishments, the things capable of. And I'll talk about it at another meeting. But so we accomplished quite a bit of stuff, and the machine is now with somebody else. And I talked about the mowing capabilities, and the thing is very capable of accepting three different kinds of mowers that go on the end of it, and which would make the machine hugely versatile. You know, only one machine to it for a town, our size. So anyway, that was, I feel myself personally that the machine was a great asset in accomplishing a lot of stuff that was on the list. But also, it's been quite a while. You know, I go out on the roads and cut a lot of trees up and move them out of the roads, and it's been a long time since I've gotten any parts to fulfill the maintenance part of that for the town. So I went to run Sasco Burn and Townsend and did a shopping spree of the things that I need to do my job. I also have ordered numerous signs, and I'm staying within the budget. I know what the budget numbers are for these items. So I've made an order for some street signs, stop signs, some signs that say, "No road maintenance from October 1st to June 1st" for secondary roads that are closed in the winter. And I also, and I ordered, purchased some more anti-theft nuts and bolts that can't be backed up once I install them, so that'll help with some of this signs theft that's going on. So as soon as those signs all come in, I'll be sure and get on to install those. I've also noticed on my travels with this machine that some of the roads are holding up well. However, certain areas that have turned dusty and have lost a little bit of erosion, and some is due to the 15-minute of hard downpours that we've got. So there's some washboard, there's some pothole. So this next week, I'll concentrate on re-scraping them with the road grader and getting them back in shape. And again, I may try to find out if we can rent another similar-type machine to do a few more accomplishments that I had listed earlier this summer before the ground freezes. I'll have a few more details that I'm checking on here. I'll bring them up at another meeting. Basically, that's the, since the last time I saw you, that's what's been going on.
I just have a question. What happens on the police call that the tree was down on Putney Mountain?
On Putney Mountain, up around the second...
Did the wind knock it down, or somebody hit it?
I believe it was a wind shear that came, because there was like four or five other trees that looked like they twisted off. And that same late afternoon, when the sky got dark, I was in Town Ward's Row, and it rained really hard. And before I could get back to where I had signal on my cellphone, I had like eight calls, and I saw Dave. I went up the mountain, and people had already cut trees out of the way.
Wow.
And so I continued to, you know, check, and everybody was there and gone. But there was a beech tree that was, you know, almost too big to reach around, and it broke off up, you know, like 15 feet. And there was a doctor who was coming over Putney Mountain, who was right behind the vehicle that the tree fell on. And he said he could see it happening. Unfortunately, it landed on the hood of a pickup truck and knocked the cab, because it probably could've done some serious damage to it.
I was just curious, because I heard the calls.
Yeah, the calls were, you know, they needed to get the tree off, the vehicle, so that they could load the vehicle onto a flatbed record truck and get it to go away.
So I was just curious.
And somebody came along within the timeframe that I got the message and got there, and took the vehicle away. So I cleaned up the debris in the ditch and rolled the wood off for the landowner. But yeah, that was a close call. Just another one of those, I think, quick 15-minute wind rain incidences.
Just one question, Mark. Did you get the message that there was a sign missing up on Harris Hill? Okay, I just wanted to make sure you got that.
I returned the call, and the sign had been ordered. It should be here with the others.
Okay, thank you.
And I told him as soon as it was here, I would install that one as well. And pretty sure that that sign was there when I did the roadside mowing, because the brush was right up to it, and I remember trying to reach around both sides. So it's probably the same one that took the Ellenware Road signs, Mountain Road sign, the whole post in Michigan.
The whole post?
Yeah. And sometimes, you know, I'll install a stop sign on the post, and then the street sign on top, just to very save on hardware. And if they get the whole thing out, they take the whole thing. Sometimes, like now, I put a new post in and hooked it to the mailboxes. They left the post, but unbolted the sign, and the sign is gone. The hardware I ordered, the bolts turn in one direction. You can't get a tool on to back it out. And the nut, you tighten it, and when you reach a certain tightness, the hexagon head breaks off, it's cone-shaped, so you can't get pliers, you can't get a wrench on it. And the bolt and nuts, like, a dollar, well, $2 for a set, really.
So you know how to get them off, right?
Yeah, I do, so when I can take them off. But, you know, normally, a person that's out of steel isn't gonna have...
I was just kidding.
And so the post itself, I've got another trim for that, you know, keeping those locked into the ground. But every town has them, and it's just, it never ends. Trying to deter it as good as we can, but deter as long as I've been working for the town, it's been happening ever since.
Yeah.
It's just one of those things, I guess.
All right, thanks, Mark. Okay, moving on to communications. Email-wise, Guy forwarded, I don't think I'd seen it otherwise, but that Rescue Inc. is doing a little virtual presentation for towns on September 17th at 6:00 about emergency response service for the region, basically. I've put it on my calendar. I'm planning on sitting in on it just to see what they have going on. And then we also got, and unfortunately, my printer cartridge died in the middle of trying to print it out, but we got a, there's a, I saw an email about the stormwater mitigation grants for the upcoming fiscal year. So maybe, maybe I'll pull it up. Maybe, Mark, you and I should talk about that, and maybe talk with Archie about whether we might want to think about... Because there, you know, there's culvert work, and there's some things that could potentially be applicable to it for us. The deadline is October 9th, so we've got to, if we get going, we could probably put something together if it's something we think we might be interested in doing. But so I'll follow up with you and Archie, and we can talk about whether we want to try to put something together. That is pretty much it for emails. Regular mail. We got a very nice copy of the VLCT News. And we received a letter from Sevka... No, I guess not Sevka, sorry. From the Southeastern Vermont Watership Alliance, thanking us for our appropriation and asking us to send them the money. So I'll put this in for Sarah to pay when she pays the other appropriations, if she hasn't already done that.
Normally, the appropriations go out after the first quarterly tax payment. So this year, because it's been pushed back, it'll probably be in a few weeks.
So we'll put that, we'll just put that for her to follow up on when she's ready to pay those. So that was it for regular mail. Then we have the pay orders. First up is the payroll warrant. We'll do my new and improved process of saying, "Gwen, do you have any questions on the payroll warrant?"
No.
Bruce, do you have any questions on the payroll warrant? Shelby, do you have any questions on the payroll warrant? Shelby, do you have any questions on the payroll warrant?
Nope.
Alright, and I'd like to make a motion that we approve Payroll Warrant 2020-62 dated September 2nd, 2020 in the amount of $1,241.82. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Bruce, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving Payroll Warrant 2020-62 dated September 2nd, 2020 in the amount of $1,241.82, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any extensions? Alright, payroll warrant is approved. Next up is the Accounts Payable Warrant, and we'll do the same thing. Gwen, do you have any questions on the Accounts Payable Warrant? Bruce, do you have any questions on the Accounts Payable Warrant?
I have it at home though. Never mind.
You don't, okay. Shelby, do you have any questions on the Accounts Payable Warrant?
I do.
Okay, then I'd like to make a motion that we approve Accounts Payable Warrant 2020-61 dated September 1st, 2020 in the amount of $8,074.75. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Shelby. Any discussion? Alright, hearing none, all those in favor of approving Accounts Payable Warrant 2020-61 dated September 1st, 2020 in the amount of $8,074.75, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any extensions? And the Accounts Payable Warrant is approved. Then moving on to the agenda, so one of the things we'll be doing at the next meeting is we'll be opening plowing and sanding and sand bids. Also, Leann Parker has asked to be added to the agenda to discuss a potential meeting house purchase of a Reni heater for the annex, and also potentially a grant proposal that she's working on putting together. So that'll be on the, I don't know exactly what I'm gonna tell, that's what we'll discuss. So that'll be on the agenda. We'll have, everybody will have a draft of the response letter that I'm gonna draft to the Vermont State Police, we'll do the usual things. Any other unusual agenda items, Gwen, that you can think of? Bruce, any other?
Just the building up.
Building, yes. Shelby, any additional agenda items you can think of?
Uh, not at the moment.
Okay. Alright, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Zero five, so moved.
Motion to adjourn by Bruce, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Gwen, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Alright, we adjourned it, let's call it 8:06.